I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number one, public hearings. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Ms. Gina McCray. She can go over anything that we might need to know before we get started.
So the board is going to be asked tonight to hear a page related to the request for a special use permit. They're not here yet. I'm sorry about that. Um, that I have a mic that actually reflects my voice, but we're going to have a hearing tonight on, um, an applicant's request for a special use permit. Um, and the board is going to conduct the public hearing. Before we do that, I'm going to ask, if any of the board members who are here tonight have any conversations with anyone about the solar farm that's planned to come before you tonight, um, that may have an influence on your decision, and do you believe that you can be unbiased? And if you will just say in the affirmative, yes, as you just said, may?
I have a conversation with, it's nothing about my decision, him or mine.
Okay. Um, and the question, we, uh, the applicant may have some additional questions about that, but do you feel like you could be unbiased in your decision today?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Speed, have you had a conversation with anybody about the solar farm?
I have a lot, and I can remain unbiased.
Bun?
I have had conversations, and I can remain unbiased.
Okay.
I have not had any conversations, and I can be unbiased.
All right. Based on that then, I'm going to ask the board, before we bring the staff forward to do the presentation, that they will vote to open the public hearing related to special use permits.
All right. Make a motion when you open it up for public hearing. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Just to talk about the procedure and what we're going to do, um, first is going to be the county staff is going to make the presentation and provide their staff reports. Um, as a part of their staff report, um, you all have received a packet, um, that had the application attached to it. You have, um, the application supporting document there in front of you. And so all of that will automatically be part of the record for your consideration. Then after the staff presents their report, we will have the applicant come forward and present their case on why you all should, um, grant the special use permit. Um, and just so that you know that you're proceeding under, um, the 160D 705, and you're proceeding under the U D O provision related to special use permit. Then applicant, applicant presents, that will be an opportunity for anybody to give, um, a release that they may have standing to present to the state people for, or, um, the solar farm. These questions from the board on what the procedure is going to be.
Oh, ma'am.
All right. Based on that, then they'll have to come forward and make that.
Colton Young, uh, 127 South Pickett Boulevard. All right. Good evening. Um, so as Ms. McCray mentioned, I've got a brief, uh, presentation for you here going over really kind of a high level overview of the project, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant and their team for a more detailed presentation. So, um, you're here tonight to hear a special use permit application from Diamond Solar Farm or Diamond Solar LLC, um, and for a solar farm and facility located along Trinity Church Road, Pete Smith Road, and Sutton Road. It comes in approximately 1,083 acres. Uh, a breakdown of that can be found on page two of the app report, which is the parcel and owners. Um, of the 1,083 acres, we're looking at approximately 704 acres that were made undeveloped, and then, uh, 379 acres that would be fenced in and a part of being developed. So, uh, quite a bit that were made undeveloped. Uh, the subject properties are in our agricultural residential zoning district, and they are part of the Tar, Tarpanocho River Basin. Um, the project has received stormwater approval from our engineer for article, uh, U D O article 913. Um, and the approved plans, uh, are complete and here to all applicable sections of the unified document. Um, and this is what you'll find on page two. I realize that may be hard for some of you to see. That's just an overall breakdown of each of the 12 different parcels that make up 1,083 acres, uh, in their respect to property owners. Uh, if you'll note, we have two parcels that have partial noted beside them, uh, so that would be parcels that are split by the road. Um, and a portion of those parcels will not be utilized for this project, and that's noted in the plan as well. And then this again is part of the staff report you can find on page two. This is the overall, you see the peat patch area, that's going to be the overall, uh, 1,000 acre acres that we're referring to there. Uh, the bottom picture with all the grain, that's going to show your zoning, uh, so the majority of the properties in the area are all owned, agricultural residential. There are two there, um, there's only one business, uh, Pete Smith Body Shop. Uh, at this time, we do have some suggested conditions of approval that we'd like the board to consider should you approve this project tonight. I'd like to read those in, uh, the records. I'm not going to read all these word for words, some of them will just be prepared, just to make sure, uh, that they're right. Uh, first, we got approved, U D O, the job order permit for all units. Second, letter of approval from the local department, environmental and natural resources, on the erosion and sanitation control plan. Third, is the appearance of all other U D S, no kind of building code requirements. Four is approval from local fire departments for all match boxes. Five, we have approval from the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And six is one area of work in there, and I'll speak to the parts that are older than the outside supply. There were priority issues, zoning, building permits, professional engineers' assessment of removal of each facility private property submitted. Uh, in addition, a bond or a letter of credit in the amount of 125% of the needed investment required for the removal of each store department. And of course, all of the box, regional time, utilities and other use. So let's get down to A there, you see the financial assurance must not expire, it will be continuous, it will be life property, and its sounder value not be considered to offset the removal cost at the end of the product. Uh, if we go down to section B there, you see the account should hold this guarantee until such time as the site turns to its original condition. Uh, we've got just a few more here. Uh, so stream and stream costing determination and approval from the C O D at E W R, each facility and product, W E R R. Also, stations and burgers, transformers shall not exceed a noise level of 30 decibels at proper length. All containers, construction tools, the pretty should be the move of site fire issues, uh, particular compliance. And in the last, the tolerance base should be installed for the plan of a minimum of six feet at the time of planting. Planting staff need to acquire additional landscaping, vegetation, vegetation. Uh, I do have some supplemental slides here that they don't need to go through. The individual parcels that we can pull is out at any point. Uh, so it's my question, like I said, the parcel, we have to go back to that, so we can please know which parcel we're referencing. So that's what the, uh, rest of these slides will be here. This, this would give me an example of one of the parcels that split our road. A portion of it is, uh, in the block five, and a portion of it is five. Um, but at that time, uh, that's all I have for this time, and I'll try to read the applicant and what's their, any questions?
The board having a question for, Mr. Pope.
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
Hey, that right in the purple right there is your 12 different parcels.
Yes, sir.
That you've got, what you're requesting a special use for. How close to the limits or to the outside edge of, is the solar farm going to be out of those panels?
It'll vary, uh, with each parcel, it'll vary how close they are. They'll have to meet all of the setbacks.
And what I mean is to where somebody else's property.
Right. They'll have to meet the, uh, the setback, non-residential uses in our ag residential domain.
And how much is that?
I believe, uh, I have to pull up the ordinance, but I think the, it's 50, 30, 30, and I could be off, but I, I believe it's 50. Uh, 30, 30, so 50 foot from the front, 30 foot from the side. That would be the minimum that they would have to meet.
The minimum. Okay. And what is that going to be, forested or vegetated or?
They would have to buffer from any residential use. If we have solar panels that are facing a meter of residential use, a home or residential building, uh, then the applicant is a buffer, including that non-residential use and the residential use.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have for right this minute.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, any other questions?
Thank you.
So just to, for the record, the, um, presentation that you just saw will also be part of the presentation. Okay, we are trying to address the, the ways issues, just so you know, we're, we're working on that.
I've got a question to that. What noise is going to come from this?
No, no, there's a high pitched noise that's still in the room, I'm afraid.
Oh, okay. You mean here, not the solar farm. Okay. I see. I was wondering.
Good evening, Chairman Bond, members of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Essick. I'm a land use and zoning attorney with the law firm, Corners Rule, in Raleigh. Um, I'm here this evening representing Hexagon Energy in connection with this special use permit, uh, for the proposed Diamond Solar Project in northern Franklin County. Staff has done a nice job summarizing the application, so I'm not going to be redundant. What I thought I might do is just provide a little bit of an overview of the project, uh, forecast some of the evidence that, testimony that you'll hear tonight from our witnesses and experts. Uh, and then, um, and then turn it over to them to, to, to present the evidence as it relates to each of the criteria set forth in the U D O. Uh, before I do that, um, you have very large notebooks on your desk there that, all that material is what was electronically included in the agenda packet, but in case folks wanted a hard copy to flip through, we want to make sure you had it. In that is, is all of the environmental reports, the appraisal reports, the, uh, various reports that we've done in connection with this and submitted along with our application. Um, as was noted, the, the total property covered by this special use permit is just over 1,100 acres. It's comprised of 12 parcels of land owned by nine different property owners. Um, for the board's benefit, um, those property owners are listed in your in- information in your pack, and a number of those are here tonight, and some of those who would like to speak in support of the project. Uh, these property owners have signed option agreements with Hexagon to lease their property for this solar project. In doing so, they've made a determination that, uh, the, this use of their land is the highest and best use for them at this time. Uh, it prevents significant other development, uh, on their land. It provides them an income stream, uh, that allows them to keep the property, in some cases, in their family, uh, while the ability uses in non-project areas as they so may desire. Uh, as noted, the project is located along Trinity Church Road, Pete Smith Road, and Sutton Road, and it's currently zoned agricultural residential. Of that 1,100 acres that we're talking about, 776 acres of that, well, will remain undeveloped, with only about a little over 350 acres being located within the fencing that houses the various solar equipment. The remainder of that excess acreage will be utilized to accommodate the, uh, U D O required vegetative buffers that are required, the setbacks that are required, any stormwater control devices, uh, and, and avoid any sort of environmental or ecologically sensitive areas. Uh, any areas that are not identified as being required for those vegetative buffers would be for the landowners to continue to use in however they see fit. Um, if approved, the project would allow the development of a solar array generating 65 megawatts of power, and will include a 25 megawatt battery energy storage system allowing for the delivery of American-produced affordable power to the electrical grid through an interconnection with an existing transmission, uh, power lines located east of Sutton Road. If approved, the project will be submitted to Duke Energy for its consideration as a part of its R F P process, and if selected, the operations would be expected to begin sometime in late 2029, early 2030. Uh, Ross Svetz with Hexagon Energy will testify this evening. He can tell you more about Hexagon and their company, but just to give you a quick background, Hexagon is an independent privately-owned energy development firm, and its principles have been developing energy projects since the late 1990s. Over the past 20 years, Hexagon's principles have developed and financed nearly 3,000 megawatts of operating energy projects across 17 states, representing a capital investment of about $1.5 billion. Uh, as the board knows, the, the hearing, as Ms. McCray explained, is a, is a quasi-judicial in nature. It requires the applicant to present, uh, competent material evidence demonstrating compliance with the seven U D O standards set forth in your ordinance. Under North Carolina law, if the applicant presents evidence on each of those, they are entitled to the permit. Um, we have additionally, I would note that North Carolina law also states that the inclusion of a particular use as a special use in a zoning district establishes a presumption that it is compatible and in harmony with the surrounding area. Um, I will talk more a little bit later about those seven standards once we've, uh, presented all of our evidence, uh, tonight. Uh, our, uh, summarize that evidence and our, uh, how we contend we meet those requirements. Um, just briefly, I'll just summarize who is going to testify tonight. That way, if you have a specific question, maybe you want to hold it for that particular witness, so you know what they're going to testify to. Uh, again, Ross Svetz with Hexagon, he's, uh, the project developer. He's going to testify, uh, concerning, um, these are your special use permit standards, one through seven. So if I refer to the number, I'm referring to the, uh, Mr. Svetz will testify regarding standards one, two, three, five, six, and seven. He'll talk about the history of the project, the community engagement that occurred prior to filing the application, a lot of the low-level impacts that come from solar, no impact on traffic, utilities, schools, infrastructure, that sort of thing. Talk about the health and safety requirements and studies that have been done on solar, both at N C State and other places. Um, also talk about the public necessity of this project and the requirement that it would have to contain a certificate of pub convenience and public necessity from the Utilities Commission, uh, if this project is approved. Uh, talk about the decommissioning and the operations of the project and requirements there, both under state law, as well as under your ordinance, as well as the economic impact that this project would have in terms of real dollars from tax revenue, uh, if, if approved. Uh, second, Mina Recta from Tetra Tech, uh, is the, uh, project, uh, engineer and design. Uh, she'll talk about, uh, the specifics of the design, the layout, the buffers that I was asking about earlier, any traffic, those sorts of things. She'll testify to standards one, two, four, and five. She will review the site plan, setbacks, vegetative buffers, security fencing signage, um, and those sorts of things, as well as the wildlife habitat studies that have been done, uh, indicating no adverse impact to this project. Uh, Michael Pear with Tetra Tech is a stormwater engineer, uh, and environmental engineer, and he'll provide testimony regarding standards one and two related to stormwater and stormwater management. As staff noted, this form of our plan has been approved by the county for this project. Uh, and then he'll talk about the environmental reports generally that are in your packet that have been done, extensive environmental reports that have been done, uh, related to avoiding any wetlands and mitigation. Finally, Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals has prepared, the M I Appraiser has prepared an extensive report that's in your packet, over 100 pages. Uh, and he is on his way, had some issues. I don't know if he'll be here in time, but, uh, but you will see in his report, he has, uh, done a detailed report of, uh, his opinion as an M I Appraiser that this project will not have any, uh, negative impacts and will maintain and enhance the value of contiguous properties. He comes to that conclusion by doing match paired sales analysis across the state, looking at sales before and after the installation of solar facility. Uh, and so his report is extensive, it's in your materials, and hopefully he'll be here answering questions if you haven't. So, um, again, uh, with that, I'll, I'll, and we also again have some landowners here, uh, who would like, uh, to speak in support of the project and, and what this would mean to them. So with that, I'll sit down and, uh, call our first witness up to testify. Uh, Ms. McCray, I assume you want to, you want to swear them all in at once, or do you want to, uh? Okay, all right.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Bun, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm not too many, but that's not what it is.
Okay.
Um, my name is Ross Svetz. Um, as Chad mentioned, I am a project developer with Hexagon Energy. Our address is 321 East Main Street, Suite 500, Charlottesville, Virginia, 22902. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Diamond Solar Facility. Um, I also wanted to give a, um, special thank you to Colton Young and Jason Rogers with the Franklin County Planning Department. Um, we were talking about it earlier. We've been working on this project together for almost a year to the day, um, pretty close. Um, so we've put a lot of work. They have been very helpful, um, in, in getting us to this point. So very, um, all of their hard work is greatly appreciated. Um, yeah, wanted to give a, uh, quick background, uh, for Hexagon Energy. We were, as I mentioned, we were founded in 2015, um, but members of our team have been developing energy projects since the, uh, late 1990s. Uh, we have over 3,500 megawatts of projects completed and an additional 65, 6,700 megawatts of projects currently under development. Uh, Hexagon was founded with certain values in mind, helped foster homegrown, American-made power generation, conduct quality work with a high level of integrity, and to engage with everyone openly and honestly. Um, for a little more detail about the project overview, uh, the project before you, as, as everybody has mentioned, is the Diamond Solar Facility. It's a 65 megawatt, uh, solar farm with an additional 25 megawatt battery system. The project spans, uh, a little over 1,000 acres between Sutton Road, Trinity Church Road, and Pete Smith Road. While the total acres for participating landowners is just over 1,000 acres, a total of 379 acres will be within the fence line, and only a total of 93 acres will be actually under solar panels. Um, this leaves a total of 704 acres that will be not affected by the project and will be left for the, for the landowners to use as they see fit. Um, the project consists of eight landowners across 12 different parcels of land. We began working with the landowners in mid-2024, uh, with environmental studies and site planning underway shortly thereafter. While we have been working with the landowners since mid-2024, many of them have been trying to use their land for a solar farm since many of them have been trying to use their land for a solar farm since as early as two thousand seventeen. And this this project provides them the opportunity to use utilize their land in a manner they believe to be most appropriate while generating enough revenue to support their families. As staff has outlined, and our consultants will discuss in more detail, the project strictly adheres to all the Franklin County Unified Development Ordinance requirements, including setback requirements, both external to the project and internal, and in most cases, it exceeds these setbacks or setback requirements. For example, the project is setback at least three hundred feet from all residences external to the project and at least a hundred feet from all roadways. The project also adheres to the interior parcel setbacks, as was discussed in Mr. Young's presentation. The project strictly adheres to the vegetated buffer requirements stated in the U D O or the Unified Development Ordinance. All plantings will be the correct species mix, distances from each other, and the minimum height at planting to ensure the project is effectively screened from view. This screening will help ensure that the project will have no adverse impacts on neighboring properties. Now that I've given an overview of the project, I'd like to speak about community engagement. This has been a top priority from the very beginning. At Hexagon, we pride ourselves on engaging with community members early and often to ensure that any concerns are addressed and questions are answered to the best of our ability. On January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, we hosted a community meeting at the Lewisburg Town Hall Operations Center with around twenty-five attendees and including one Franklin County Commissioner who is not here tonight. The main questions centered around buffers, traffic impacts, view sheds, and stormwater. We followed up individually with neighbors to ensure we did everything we could to address their questions and concerns. We did our we did our best to incorporate the feedback we received from the neighbors into the design of the project. There were a couple of instances where we even removed slash moved multiple solar panel arrays in direct response to feedback we received from neighbors to the project. This was all done to help ensure that the project is the best neighbor possible if slash when it is built and in operation. For example, there were view shed concerns from Pete Smith Garage, so we removed a large section of panels directly behind the garage, which satisfied this concerned neighbor. In addition, we made a significant donation to the Lewisburg Fire Department to help fund their new swift water rescue team. We have members of the fire department in attendance here tonight to support the project, who I believe you will hear from later. As it relates to economic impact, Diamond Solar will deliver significant economic benefits without requiring any county infrastructure investments. We had Mangum Economics, an independent economic analysis firm, prepare an economic analysis for the project. A full copy of that report can be found in the materials that was provided electronically and and that you have in front of you, our our light reading that we provided for you. Over a thirty-year period, the project is expected to generate more than two point four million dollars in county tax revenue compared to just forty-five thousand dollars that the land remained in its current use. That's a fifty-threefold increase in revenue for the county. During construction alone, the project would support a total of forty-eight local job years and generate over seven point four million in local economic output. Once operational, it will continue to support local jobs and spending each year. Solar projects like Diamond Solar create steady demand for skilled local labor. This is all achieved without requiring any additional county infrastructure, such as water, sewer, schools, or roads. This means all of the additional revenue generated by the project can help alleviate upward pressure on taxes and can be allocated to help improve the county infrastructure that was just mentioned. As far as health and safety for solar farms, in two thousand seventeen, N C State conducted a study to understand the health and safety impacts of solar farms and found that they do not pose any significant health risk. A copy of that study is also included in your materials that were provided. It is worth noting that while the N C State study was conducted in two thousand seventeen, since then, solar facilities have only become more advanced and safer overall. Eighty-five to ninety-five percent of the materials that make up solar panels are glass, plastic, and aluminum. According to the U S Environmental Protection Agency, while some solar panels contain trace amounts of material like lead or cadmium, they are safely encapsulated in glass that is coated in a vinyl layer. This vinyl layer prevents the glass from shattering and ensures that the panels do not pose a risk of leaching or exposure. In addition, the majority of solar panels used today do not contain any cadmium at all. The lead that is contained within the solar panels is twelve to fifteen grams or about half the amount of lead in a twelve-gauge shotgun shell or one seven-hundred-and-fiftieth of the lead in a car battery. Even in extreme situations such as fire or storm damage, scientific testing shows that toxic elements remain contained and do not pose a meaningful risk to neighbors or the environment, which is why you can you can find solar panels on homes and schools. To further ensure health and safety, the project will be enclosed by a six-foot fence, six-foot high-chain link fence per the U D O, and will be monitored remotely to ensure everything is operating properly. Project will be built to all local, state, and federal electrical codes. After the usable lifetime of the project, the panels will be removed from the land. The project will pose the performance security, as was mentioned in Mr. Young's presentation, which should be a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value of the removal of the facility and will adhere and will strictly adhere to these requirements. This will include updating the security mount at least every five years to ensure the performance security reflects any increase in the cost of removal of the facility. In addition, in June of two thousand twenty-three, North Carolina House Bill one thirty was enacted, which requires all solar projects greater than two megawatts be decommissioned, be decommissioned at the end of their usable life, and the land returned to as close to pre-existing conditions as possible. The E P A has also determined that solar panels are safe enough to dispose of in municipal landfills, though not all landfills will take them due to the sheer volume. As far as the finding of facts, I've been not keeping up with my my presentation here. So in in summary, I kind of just wanted to go over the the findings of facts that we are meeting here. Based on the extensive reports and materials we have provided in our application, along with the testimony you will hear tonight, Diamond Solar meets the approval criteria for a special use permit, specifically the following findings of fact. The project maintains and promotes public health, safety, and welfare. Solar farms are low-impact land use that safely generates substantial increases in tax revenue for the county without putting any additional strain on county infrastructure. During the life of the project, the land is allowed to rest after decades of intense farming, and at the end of the life of the project, it can be returned to its original state. The project will also help meet the growing energy demands for Franklin County and the state of North Carolina as a whole. Solar farms do not leach any hazardous substances into the land and do not pose significant health risks to humans or the farm. Two, it fully complies fully with the Unified Development Ordinance. Diamond Solar strictly adheres to the requirements listed in the Unified Development Ordinance, including all setbacks, vegetated buffers, and decommissioning rules. Three, the project will maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property or that the use or development is a public necessity. We had a comprehensive property value impact analysis completed by Kirkland Appraisals LLC, which demonstrates that the project will maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property. Also, we plan on submitting this project to the two thousand twenty-five Duke Energy Request for Proposals, or R F P, process. If selected to participate in this project program, the project will have to obtain a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the North Carolina Utilities Commission. So in order for the project to be built, the North Carolina State, the North Carolina Utilities Commission will confirm that this project is a public necessity. Four, the proposed use conforms with the U D O and the Franklin County Comprehensive Development Plan. As I noted earlier, and staff has testified, the proposed project conforms with all the U D O requirements for solar farms. Additionally, contained in section nine three of our narrative, we have specifically outlined how the proposed project conforms with the county's comprehensive plan. But to briefly summarize, the project is outside of areas denoted as Conservation One and Conservation Two on the future land use map, and the project will avoid any environmentally sensitive areas, which is consistent with the host of policies in the plan. By being included as a special use in the A R zoning district, it is determined, it has been determined that solar farms are an appropriate use within the zoning district. The project is a low-intensity use and will not require the use of public utilities, including water, sewer, or additional road infrastructure, which is consistent with the host of comprehensive plan policies related to minimizing traffic congestion and impacts on water and sewer infrastructure. Screening, buffering, and landscaping will harmonize with surrounding properties and minimize adverse impacts. The project will adhere to all county requirements regarding screening, buffering, and landscaping, which will be in harmony with surrounding properties. The proposed use, including such considerations as hours of operation and number of people who are likely to utilize or be attracted to the use, will not have significant adverse impacts on adjoining properties or the neighborhood. Through thoughtful design, community engagement efforts, and adherence to all county requirements regarding screening, buffering, and landscaping, the project will not adversely impact adjoining properties. Once built, solar farms are not open to the public, so there are no hours of operation to consider, and the number of people who visit the site will be nominal, approximately one to two vehicle trips per month and for routine maintenance only. Solar farms are low-impact, tax-positive developments that we have proved to not adversely impact adjoining properties. And finally, public services such as schools, police, fire, and utilities will not be burdened by the project. This project will not require any public services such as schools, police, fire, or utilities, and therefore will not be a burden. Thank you very much for your time and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I've got one. What's the expected market value of this project?
As far as how much it will cost to build?
Or the value of it?
I don't have the exact figures for that in front of me. The eventual project owner will be responsible for procuring goods and and cost of construction, but looking at hundreds hundreds of millions of dollars of investment for for the total cost to construct the the facility.
And is there any, do we get the full market value far as getting the property tax end of it? Or is there some of it that's exempt?
There wouldn't be any of it that would be exempt, no, sir. As far as there would be a breakdown, the Mangum Economics report gave a breakdown of the the taxes, which is included in the materials there, but they do a breakdown of what what the taxes would be.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I guess we're ready for the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mina Rekta. My address is forty-one oh one Cox Road, Suite one hundred, Richmond, Virginia, two thirty zero. My name is Mina Rekta, and I'm with Tetra Tech, which is an environmental and engineering consulting firm. I have a degree in environmental science and have been working in this industry for over a decade. As a project manager, I specialize in environmental planning and permitting at the local and state level. I've managed over a hundred renewable projects at nearly every stage of solar development, from early sighting and due diligence to pre-construction and post-construction remediation. Diamond Solar meets all of the riparian buffer requirements. It adheres to the fifty-foot buffer requirements from all delineated stream and wetlands. It also adheres to all of the buffer yard requirements, which is for the Agricultural Residential Zoning District and the table of which you can see in the presentation. Diamond Solar also meets the U D O requirements, such as the structures do not exceed over twenty-five feet in height. The project meets minimum yard setback requirements as stated in the video slide. The project will be enclosed in a six-foot chain-link fence, and it will not create a visual safety hazard for passing motor and byway of vegetated buffer. The existing vegetation will be preserved where feasible, and proposed landscaping will be will be provided to add additional screening within the one-hundred-foot vegetative buffer. The proposed landscaping provides a mix of deciduous and evergreen plantings at various heights to provide screening while blending in with the existing vegetation. A lighting plan has also been provided and designed so that all the lighting will not be directed at adjacent properties four rights away. All parking lots have been designed to accommodate three maintenance vehicles at each of the seven entrances. For noise, the Diamond Solar project will produce minimal noise as is typically generated from the inverters and are setback from the adjacent properties. The closest inverter is designed at at least five hundred forty feet and across a highway from the nearest residence. The substation is surrounded by by surrounded by vegetation, and it's located on the interior of the project area and is over fifteen hundred feet from the closest residence. Tetra Tech conducted a traffic impact analysis, and it was performed in May of two thousand twenty-five. Peak traffic is anticipated during the two to three months of peak construction. Once the construction is complete, traffic will be limited to one to two maintenance vehicle trips per month. Local roadways are anticipated to have ample capacity to support the peak construction operations. Tetra Tech also performed a wetland delineation in March of two thousand twenty-five. As previously stated, all the delineated stream and wetland features will be avoided with a fifty-foot vegetative with a fifty-foot buffer. A Threat and Endangered Species Assessment was also conducted by Tetra Tech in November of two thousand twenty-four. A species-specific survey, such as the Bald Eagle Survey, was performed in March of two thousand twenty-five, which determined that there were no active or inactive nests found on site. An acoustic bat survey was also performed in April of two thousand twenty-five. There were no federally endangered northern long-eared bat species found on site. This project will also adhere to federally mandated clearing windows to avoid impacts on any bat habitat. For cultural and historic resources, Tetra Tech performed a desktop study in September of two thousand twenty-four. All the historic findings, including residences and churches, have been avoided. To summarize, the special use permit findings of fact meets, one, the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. The use or the development complies with all required regulations of this U D O and all applicable specific standards and regulations. The location and arrangement of the use of the site, screening, at buffering, landscaping, and pedestrian ways harmonize with the adjoining properties and the general area and minimize adverse impacts. Thank you, and I welcome all questions.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Michael Hare, and I'm an engineer with Tetra Tech. I am a North Carolina licensed P E, license number zero five 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 zero three. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, as well as a master's degree in water resources engineering from Virginia Tech. I have been working as an engineer for twenty-one years and in the solar industry for roughly the last eight years. We serve as owner's engineer for a lot of E P Cs, and we also design a lot of solar facilities myself. I have reviewed dozens of plans developed by other engineers, and we ourselves have developed plans for, in addition to the conceptual site plan for this facility in North Carolina, several others, as well as several sites in Virginia. So civil site design in North Carolina is required to comply with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality's Stormwater Design Manual. And in addition, Franklin County has the U D O, which has stormwater requirements in it as well. With respect to that, the preliminary stormwater management plan that we developed to go along with conceptual site plan was reviewed and approved by David Revoy, the county's third-party engineer. So we did design the site in accordance with the U D O such that it approved. Now, having said that, in North Carolina, with the requirements for stormwater management, high-density projects are required to develop stormwater control measures, and low-density projects are not required to develop stormwater control measures, provided they meet certain requirements. Now, we designed Diamond Solar to meet those requirements. The total built-upon area for the site, as outlined in the U D O, is required to be under twenty-four percent. Solar panels in North Carolina are not considered Solar panels in North Carolina are not considered impervious. They are considered pervious, again, as long as certain criteria are met. In the stormwater design manual, it's in Appendix E6, and it essentially says that if subsoil compaction is avoided, if runoff is disconnected from the panels, in other words, there's a space between the impervious and the pervious. Herbicide and fertilizer use is minimized, mix of warm and cool grasses is utilized, and the maximum height for the equipment is maintained under 10 feet, so that that drip edge doesn't cause impact on the ground. All of those criteria are being met, so our solar panels are not impervious. So, with that being said, the amount of pervious, or impervious surface that is being added to the project site is only 23 acres. So, out of a 1,064-acre site, that translates to a built-upon area of 2.13%, so we're well under the 24% for low-density development. So, with that said, there will not be stormwater management cons or features required in the post-development design. Instead, the grading will be minimized. Site design typically for solar facilities mimics the natural hydrology to the extent practicable. The only grading we generally do is to, for the tracker tolerances, but in any case, those will not be required. The two elements of stormwater design are generally stormwater quantity and stormwater quality. So, the quantity piece is covered by the low-density development and the being under the 24% DUA. Water quality is calculated in North Carolina using the SNAP tool. And in our preliminary stormwater management plan, the SNAP tool calculates nitrogen and phosphorus loading, and it's limited to 640 acres. Now, our site is larger than that, so what we did was we scaled it proportionally. We just took 50% of the developed, the developed area of the site. So, we've got 1,000 acres, 1,064 at least acres, and 700, whatever it was, 704, I think, believe, disturb area acres. So, when you plug those into the SNAP tool with the addition of the impervious areas, the only impervious that we're adding is roads, foundations, the solar piles that hold up the panels, and pads for equipment, so the best, the battery storage pad, et cetera. Those increased impervious areas, and then any roofs and any existing structures that are at the site are going to be demolished to make room for the solar facility. So, those impervious goes away. We add some impervious, and some of the trees get cleared and get changed from forest into managed turf or landscaping. The SNAP tool calls it managed pervious area. But in any case, when all those numbers get plugged in, the nitrogen and phosphorus loading numbers are well below the requirement, so we do not need to put in any best management practices for additional pollute production. So, our water quality is being met, we're hitting the SNAP numbers, the water quantity is being met by being below the 24% DUA. And again, we're only adding 23 acres of impervious surface over a roughly 1,000-acre site. So, the project is also located within the Tarpehamlico Basin, so there are several requirements outlined by the UDO that stem from that. There are requirements for protection of riparian areas. As stated by my colleagues before, we are honoring the 50-foot setback from the riparian areas, so we're not doing any development in those areas. We are protecting them. The quantity calculations are also required under the UDO, but as I said, we meet the DUA, so we're covered there. And the UDO also requires the quality calculations, and as I've explained, we are well below the required. Beyond that, for stormwater consideration purposes, as far as flood damage is concerned, you can see on the map up there, the entire project area, or almost the entire project area, is located in a special flood, is located in a FEMA Zone X, which is less than a half percent chance of annual flooding. So, no portions of the site that are being developed are in the 100-year floodplain. Even if they were, we would have adhered to the requirements for additional design that are associated with that, but we're keeping out of that area altogether. So, the map, the map there illustrates that most of the project area is in the flood zone X, for which there are no additional requirements. So, to summarize, the way we have designed the site for stormwater, we are meeting items one and two from the special use permit findings, and again, we are honoring public health, safety, and the general welfare, and we are complying with all state requirements in the design. I'll stop there, and before any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Here now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I did want to clarify one thing to Commissioner Floyd's question about the tax exemptions. North Carolina State does have an 80% tax abatement, which, that abatement has been reflected in the Mangum Economics study that we had done and reflects, and that 2.4 million in increase in tax revenue over the 30-year life of the project reflects that abatement.
So, we'd be taxing 20% of it.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There are conversations, and legislation has been proposed at the state level to reduce that, but nothing has been, nothing has been passed, but there are conversations being had at the state level of reducing that, that number. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for your patience in letting us present. In the interest of time, I won't go through all the standards again and summarize the evidence. I think you've heard it all. I will note that our appraiser is on his way. If there are questions about his report, he may be here by the time we get around, and if you have questions for him. I will note on standard three regarding impacts to property values, that only comes to, is only a standard if it's not a public necessity. And so, you heard testimony tonight that this project will be required to get a convenience, a certificate of convenience and public necessity from the state utilities commission. So, there will be a determination at some point of public necessity if this project goes forward. So, I will submit to you that, on that particular standard, we presented evidence that there's a public necessity, but even if there's not, Mr. Kirkland's report is in your packet and has done a very extensive analysis and indicates that this will not negatively impact property values and will promote and maintain them. So, but if there's any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I know there's some landowners that want to speak. I don't know if now's the appropriate time or how you want to handle it, but for us, that's our presentation. I'd ask that all the materials be put part of the record. I believe they already are, as well as our PowerPoint presentation. And we would, of course, reserve the right to cross-examine any witnesses or prevent any, present any rebuttal evidence in response to any evidence that's submitted tonight. Thank you for your time.
And this term, we have two people that have applied to speak to the board. The first one is Harold Darrington.
You have a question before we start? If you go through anything, find the place which can bring the application, we do, and the end of the question.
So, I will ask if Warren will make that position, and we will opt out, and I have spoken with the chairman of the dam, and he would open to acknowledge some other people who were before or. Mr. Cam and the board, you can take one more question.
I'm Harold Darrington, and I reside in Smithville, North Carolina, but I was raised, born and raised in Franklin County, in a community called Molton. So, I thank you for the privilege to be with you and explain why our family, why our family would like for you to approve the special use permit that has been requested by the advocate Diamond Solar LLC. Property, the partial that we own is a group in the request for the special permit. We're known as the Darrington's Farms, and we're located on Peats Mill and Sutton Road in the Molton community. We're known as the Darrington's Farms LLC. This farm has recently been acknowledged as a century farm by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. The recognition is when a farm has been formed by the same family for over 100 years. Specifically, this farm has been in the same family for over 150 years. And at the present, the family's surname is Joseph Cavers Darrington, and it's in the fifth generation of that particular name. But you know, Darrington Farm is an old established farming community. So, the family has changed a lot during this time, and the product and farming methods have also changed. My brother Joe is last in the line to cultivate the soil, produce a product for sale. Everyone else has moved to the city to generate a living or serve our country in armed service as a Marine. We would like to continue with a new method of farming that is harvest and sun-raised and converting them into soil energy and distributing this energy in the eastern North Carolina area. The transmission line runs through two farms that are in the request for the, for the special use permit. And the transmission line runs through two, and that all the farms border or join each other, and that is listed in this request. This makes a feasible, this makes it feasible to develop such a large solar farm. We would like to be able to continue using the land with a product that will enable us to keep the Darrington Farm in operation for many years to come, and request that you consider consideration for this purpose.
Right. Thank you.
I live on Sutton Road, 1131 Sutton Road, Lewisburg, and just like Mr. Darrington, not many people know it, but the land I live on has been in our family for well over 100 years. It's always been nice and quiet over there, and I'm all for the solar farm because regular farming is going out, and I understand a lot of the people that are willing to have their land used for this solar farm are no longer able or want to farm the traditional way. So, if we allow solar farm, we're still farming, and the land will still be held by the landowners, is my understanding. So, down the road, when the solar farms are disbanded and gone, we can go back to regular farming, or hopefully, or some other type of useful farm, but keep the land in the families and keep the countryside, the countryside. And the solar farms, I think, will come closer to doing that than any other purpose that I think the land could possibly be used for. In other words, no housing development. And I think, from all I've heard tonight, the county will still benefit from this quite a bit, not just the landowners, and I think the people around this would be appreciative if it's done this way and not any other way. And like I say, I still think the land will be being put to good use. That's all I have to say. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so you mentioned that is all that's been advanced since night, and you're on your first farm.
I would, yes.
If we allow any interference.
All right, second.
In a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The president said it's not acceptable. He didn't accept. He was fine.
Where I come from, official, what's your name?
My name is Charles Bower, and I don't live in the Molton community, but I own three pieces of land. One question I have is how far down Sutton Road does this project go? Because I have property that joins Sutton Road.
What are planners, the physical address of your?
Yeah. I don't know. It's all leased out, so.
Take him back to you.
We can look at the overall site plan. We can go to the bars here on Sutton Road, but if you'll take a look at the upper portion of the site plan there, to that very uppermost pink area, that's going to be your Sutton Road area. Happy to, just a moment, see if I can find one that may show it more zoomed in area. So, if you take a look here, where you see the yellow lines, splits off, and this is going to be at the upper right portion of the screen here, that's pointing into Sutton Road. And I believe, I'll please, unless it's, it's, it's really more focused part of the area. So, that's also Sutton Road there. Yep, and then, and then, there you go.
You can't type in his physical address and run that up?
Ah, I mean, so there's a bridge on Sutton Road. If you're looking at the top, the top right-hand map, there is a bridge that goes over the creek, and that is where that property stops. I, I.
How far is he away from?
I'm not sure exactly where, where do you live on Sutton Road? Or where's your property, I should say?
What's your street address or number?
It's before you get to that, part of it is before you get to the bridge you're referring to. And I want to know how, one of the things I need to know is how far, in other words, east, I guess, south, southeast of Sutton Road. How close to Sutton Road does it fall?
So, it varies, as Colton testified earlier, it varies throughout their different areas with, around the project, but it's at least everywhere to the least 100 feet of that lake.
Okay. Okay. What, what, was that again, on a joining property line? That might help answer the question.
That might help answer the question.
Are you talking about the side, the side setbacks? It was thirty feet for the, the side setbacks.
But when you get that, you got, they were, they were, they were.
We sent letters to all the neighboring landowners.
Yeah. Did he get a letter?
He did.
Okay. He did not?
I, I don't remember, I can't tell you if he's not.
We sent all landowners in the vicinity, we sent, we sent letters, um, especially notifying of the community meeting, um, and also landowners as we were still building out the project. Um, we sent letters to all neighboring landowners, um, inquiring of any interest. Um, I'm not sure what happened to the letter, I, I, I'm not, but we did send them out.
Uh, do you know where the transmission line comes across Sutton Road? Uh, some, some way.
Not exactly, I, I can't speak to exactly where it crosses Sutton Road, but I think that's almost, right.
Yeah, so I, I believe that's the transmission line.
It is.
I think that's the question you're asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Your property is to the south of there?
Uh, to the east of.
The transmission line crosses right there.
Right. All right, I.
Look, do this here. Yeah, I believe the parcel that's not highlighted pink is, 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 that's right. Which one was it? The one I just had up?
Yeah.
That one.
Yes, this parcel, yeah.
So it's the one, the only one that's not highlighted pink in this.
That's right.
Right.
Is that, yeah, that's Sutton Road, and that's one of your parcels right there. Okay.
But I don't know where this project is. This way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that, that, that should be his parcel.
That's part of, some of.
This is the transmission.
Okay, and then where is the project?
This parcel to the north is, or to the, that's part of the project.
Oh, okay, so it is adjacent.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was his question.
Okay. So what we can put, uh, up for all Sutton Road, thirty feet, fifty feet?
Hundred feet.
Hundred feet.
Yes.
Yes, I'm not sure that I understand where, where the project ends going southeast, I mean southwest, and where my property began, so. But anyway, I guess it won't come on my property.
No, it wouldn't, no.
And I'm not a good first people. Think it's ten, three, four, diamond table, three.
Hello, my name is Wendy Fuller. I live at nine eight eight Trinity Church Road. This solar farm will be directly in front of my property, and I never got a letter stating that the meeting in January was going to happen. I didn't know about it until the day of the meeting, or the day before the meeting, somewhere right in there, and I found out about it once I'm able to be at that meeting. I'm concerned about the entry points of where the construction will be, um, on the property. I don't want it to affect my daily life. I'm concerned about the tearing it down of all the trees and burning. I don't want any burning done, it needs to be hauled off if this construction happens, instead of burning it, because it will affect people with COPD, it will affect people with heart disease, it will affect people in the area, and I know there are several very critical neighbors of mine, J.B. Hunt would be one of them, and with different things going on, it will affect their health. I'm concerned about the water, the toxic runoff affecting my water in my well, and affecting the water that I cook with and drink, and wash my clothes with and bathe with. I'm concerned about the animal habitat, even though they have all these different precautions that they take in place, but what exactly is going to be in front of my home? On those, where my home is, what exactly is going to be there? Now, I have lived there for fifty years. My late husband was William Fuller, and his family lived there before that. He was born into this house that I live in. His mother and father owned a lot of that land, and his cousins owned a lot of the land that is owned by the present landowners now, until it was all divided. So it's very, very sentimental to me, and I want to make sure that there's not going to be any health concerns, no burning of trees, no smoke in the air, no toxic runoff of water, and I'm also, um, want to know where those entry points are going to be for all of this, you know? If, I don't want it to be in front of my house, I want to make sure that it's not. And I really think that it's, um, you know, not going to benefit me in any way, shape, or form. Um, it's going to benefit the landowners, because they're going to get an enormous amount of money for leasing their land to, to these two companies, um, but it's not going to benefit me, and it's not going to benefit the other neighbors that live up and down the road. So I oppose this project wholeheartedly, and I don't want it to affect my relationship with my neighbors and the landowners. However, I do not want the solar farm there. I want to protect our trees. I think it would be better used if they were to maybe sell small portions of their farms to people, where families can thrive, they can develop horse farms. There are three horse farms right around my house, and I'm afraid that it's going to affect the animals and all of that, and I, it just concerns me very much. Thank you.
Would anybody help?
Please.
Okay. Come on.
My name is Connie Smith, and I live at one seven Smith Road, which is off of Trinity Church Road. We had a name on that, and I had a great, that was. I have been, let's see, my husband passed away on May eleventh of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, he had farmed that land ever since he was older than that, just parents farmed the land, and they did not own it, but they farmed it. And then in nineteen seventy-nine, he and I and my children bought that, bought that farm, it was about a hundred and eighty-something. Um, he stopped tobacco, but he had cancer, and he had had hay, but he passed away, and, um, I did not, I could not handle that too bad, and so we got rid of the hay and stuff all. But, um, I just, um, if we, if this doesn't come about, I don't want to, I may have to fill my home, because I'm the only income in my home, and so I might just consider that if we will. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Susan Dixon, and I'm in fifteen eleven, due Valentine Road, and I've been here before in our position, and I do not stand in opposition to none. I, um, I respect my neighbors and their needs, and Wendy happens to be one of my closest neighbors, and I respect her needs also, and she was not informed before, and I know that, because I, I called her, and I don't like for people to say that they informed neighbors and came around knocking on doors when they said they did and they did not. However, what I came here to say is this, I just don't like to see people blindsided, and when you talk about the taxes, it is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, whomever here is knows better, but I've looked it up. The county stands to make a lot of money, and one of the solar farms in Franklin County already is projected to make over three million dollars over the course of the lifetime of this solar farm. But it is my understanding that the money made is from the taxes of the increased value of income from the land, and I don't want anybody here who wants their farm to be under solar panels and to get that income not to be fully aware of the tax burden that they may get. And that's where I'm coming from tonight, and we, we are few who are opposed it, and there seem to be many who are for it, and I've never been one not to go with it as well. So that's why I'm here tonight. If you're a landowner, be aware and be ready, and, um, thank you for your time.
So I'm here for two reasons. One, um, I did contact them about helping with Lewisburg Fire Department, and as soon as I let them know about the incident we had in the county, we wanted to start a swift water rescue team, no hesitation. He said, uh, we like community engagement, and due to the fact of what we were trying to do, and why we were trying to do it, um, and because a child lost their life, it was no hesitation, it was a check cut for a significant amount of money, and we're thankful, like I said, to help us get our swift water rescue team up and running. Like I said, we're still in the process of all that, but that's the first thing. The next thing is, this, don't affiliate me with Lewisburg Fire Department, this is my own thing, uh, I work for a solar company. I have no affiliation with their solar company. So, a little bit about, we worried about water, we worried about how it's going to affect, um, it's not. I just did a, um, back in June, soil sample with our company, in a site in Warner County that's been in operation eight to ten years, and our reason we got back, it was nothing out of the ordinary herbicides or metals or anything that you can get off the heat of a farm. I know there's been a lot of talk about what happens if you want to solar farm decommissioned, you can't grow stuff there. That is not true. And, um, and I'm speaking from, like I said, a solar professional, that's what I've done for the last eighteen years. So, the groundwater is not going to be affected, or nothing to that nature. I know neighbors are not happy about it, some are, some are not, but I come, I don't come opposed, I'm for it, and, um, like I said, it's going to bring jobs to the county. Yes, they may be temporary for construction-wise, but as income for the county, they're going to be here probably a year or two during construction. That's food, that's, you know, everything in Lewisburg, so, like I said, when y'all consider it, I just want to let y'all know, and on a solar standpoint, and for, for Wendy's question, it's not going to affect the animals, it's not going to affect anything else. I don't know how they do it, but I know our company, which our company is very large, and we've got over, I think, twenty-eight states we're in, we don't spray hard herbicides or anything to that nature to affect animals or affect groundwater or affect anything to that. Like I said, if you write about something to the farm, but ain't say it like that, you can look at it, but nothing's affecting them, because, um, they live in there. They grow trees, fruit, things, on, on some people's stuff. So, it's not going to affect the crops later down the road if it gets decommissioned or anything like that. That's all I got.
I'll, I'll be very brief, just want to touch on a couple of points that we heard. Uh, one of, one of the comments made was the increase in taxes on the property owners as a result of this project. The option agreements and the lease agreements with these property owners require, uh, the landlord to pay any increases in taxes or any rollback taxes that may result in, so there will be no additional tax burden placed on the landowners under those leases, so I wanted to clarify that point. Um, there was a comment, I was just digging through Franklin County's ordinances, and I came across section fourteen dash seventy-nine that deals with, um, no nuisance burning is allowed, and it defines what that is, and does not allow, uh, smoke to impact neighbors and irritation and that sort of thing, so you already have regulations in place that are going to prevent that type of burning, so I just want to bring that, uh, code ordinance to your attention. Um, uh, and then lastly, I just want to point out that again, our, as Ms. McCray would probably advise you, um, under North Carolina law, you know, speculative fears or can, or concerns are not relevant or competent or material evidence as a part of a quasi-judicial hearing. Uh, decisions are based on evidence and facts, and those qualified to make those, uh, uh, opinions. And so tonight, we presented extensive testimony from a stormwater engineer, uh, environmental engineers, uh, on all of these topics that were discussed, and stormwater and environmental considerations, so we asked to, that, those, that competent material evidence that was before you tonight in making your decision. So, again, with that, happy to answer any questions. I won't run through the standards again, I think y'all have heard enough, but, uh, we, we believe that we've satisfied each of those seven criteria, and again, happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Ms. Chair, thank you, members of the commission.
Uh, I think this fellow's going to have to answer this in relationship to what Fuller asked about entrances to the construction site in relation to her property.
We can call someone up to address that. I just did want to point out, um, Rich Kirkland, the appraiser, is here, uh, his report's in your packet, I summarized it. If there's any questions for him, he is here available to provide that, uh, roughing. You wanted to know where the entrances will be?
Yeah, in relationship to her property, that was one of her concerns.
Sure.
You know, she didn't want the entrance to be, you know, where she could, in front of her house, I believe she said.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure where exactly her home is on Trinity Church Road. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure where exactly her home is on Trinity Church Road. Okay. It is not across from her property. For the site plan that was submitted, that's part of the record. There are, there is not an entrance directly across from her property.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Russ.
When you clear some of that land, wood, trees, and stuff, how do you dispose of them?
Any timber that is there, it would be, if it has value, it will be sold. And then stumps will be removed and disposed of properly. Well, I think we talked about, per the ordinance, there are rules about burning. So I don't believe that we would be able to do that per, per the, the code. But they would, they would be. So we adhere to those processes for the burning.
Any other questions? Okay, so we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing. A second, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I made the motion. Did any of them submit? The order criteria was met. That's your motion. Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second and mark, okay? Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, that motion carries. Okay, so we need a motion to grant special use permit.
They're right here and on the next slide, and these are what I went over earlier. Happy to go over them again or answer any questions. But it's two slides there. Again, will be a part of your staff report on page five, I believe, but happy to answer any questions. And sorry, I meant to say this on the record earlier, the applicant has no objection to the proposed condition by staff.
I made the motion to reject it from the candidates' suggested conditions.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. There's no other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Listen, uh, hearing aid.
So?
Yeah, it sounds just like my thing.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I think it was a hearing aid. As soon as I put it together in my head, it had stopped. So I was pretty sure it was battery going in there.
It sounded just like my mom.